September 23rd, 2025 School Board Workshop. Please stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. I would now take roll call.
Lauren Ramirez present, Jenny Ruddy present, Kristi Chong.
Will Ferry present.
Well, Shaka Moore.
And so we will move on with Board member liaison updates. Start with this Ramirez down there.
All right, so we're going to start with focus on youth coalition. So we had our meeting on August 27th. It was virtual and it went great. We are going to be finding out our two school board liaisons, I believe, tonight. So one from Metanasis, one from FPC. So once we have those two students, we will be able to figure out the annual teen summit. And so for those that aren't aware of what this group is, it is ran by the youth, ran by our students. So middle school, high school students. I'm very actually impressed with the amount of students that attend these events. So looking forward to that. Just some stats though that we went over at our meeting. One in five students in middle school have tried tobacco in Flagler County. One in four have tried tobacco in our high schools. So that is a huge initiative that they've been working on. So trying to just get the information out. Next virtual meeting is actually tomorrow. So I will try to post something on Facebook, get more input from students. Next we have our Beltar Elementary. So they are my liaison. We had our PTO and our SAC the same day as the nine 11. So thank you for, I'm glad everyone split up and tried to manage all the events. PTO was great. You know, I'd like to just say the volunteers, their students, or excuse me, their, their parents, their guardians and teachers are in there as liaison. So awesome job. Something that was pretty amazing, so $15,000 they received from the Education Foundation. So some type of grant they assisted with for a computer science club. So now I feel after COVID, I know COVID's been gone a long time, but it's been really challenging, at least for me as a parent, to see all these clubs coming back. So we're going to have a computer science club. We're looking for sponsors, for teachers, for kinder engineers to come back up, Lego Club, coding, so a lot of things. So whatever elementary school your kids are at, please read the flyers because that stuff's coming. All right. They have a new nurse. They had a great dance. We had our own district DJ in the house in the back. So thank you so much for volunteering with that. We also have business sponsors. So we talked about businesses and communities assisting well. Two businesses stepped up, Quantum Electric and South Moyn Center for American Ideas. And they purchased for our custodial staff, a go-kart, a go-kart, golf cart, one of those? Yep. And so it was donated. So if you are a business and you want to assist any of our schools, it's very lovely. So please go ahead and help out with that if you'd like. So we're very excited about that. Our custodian staff will have that SAC we held right after. We had our annual Title I Parent Meeting. It was great. We did have some parents that did attend when they can. Title I is funding, so funding that were provided to give schools the extra support for the students and for the faculty and upcoming events. So September 30th is math night funded by Title I Funding. English night, December 5th funded by Title I Funding and science, March 10th funded by that. So way to go, Beltar. So Metanasis was next. We had our SAC meeting on September 10th. SAC, I talk about it every time, parents are involved. They have so many students involved. So students at whatever high school you go to or middle school, please try to attend. And they vote on where funding goes. So just to kind of give a couple of updates, we reviewed our school, school improvement plan. And it was a great meeting, but I just wanted to take away algebra, what they did. They revamped and I just want parents to know, they're looking into the data and like what's working and what's not working. So in the past, they had algebra separated. I won't go in too much detail, but however they had it, it wasn't working. So they know that and they changed it. And I, I mean, for them to go through all this, it's just great. So I'm really hopeful for our algebra classes, they're pushing any students with 504s and IEPs that, hey, you can take algebra too. You, they're pushing them, they're giving them that motivation because just because you have a disability doesn't mean you can't take algebra. So some of them may really, really like algebra. And they're also pushing literacy in all subjects. So every single algebra class at Metanasis has a reading interventionist. So they're trying to combine and that's just not algebra. So just kind of giving you a couple of little things. Ms. Legaki, the multi-tiered system of support. So she is actually 21 years and retiring. So they're very sad, but they're very happy. So I wanted to shout out. And also there's a new nurse Jen, lots of new nurses and two comments from two parents for Nurse Jen. So I, so Nurse Jen, I haven't met you, but the parents really appreciate the care that you're giving their students. So thank you so much. My next is FSBA, so Florida School Board Association. I'm the liaison for that. And Ms. Ruddy and I, we didn't get to see each other much, but we were both at a training conference for bargaining and policymaking, which I will tell everyone in this county that because Flagler County, we started policy the day, like actually before we were sworn in, I feel, it was a piece of cake for us, at least in my opinion. I think I, she was like way, way on the other side. I just was like, we got this. So Flagler County, we're very lucky. I was sitting at tables with counties with over 200 schools, counties with 112 schools. And because of what we're doing with Niola, which is our policymaking, where we'll be doing that today, we're great. We're, I mean, it will always continue to make things better, but I felt so good being with every, all of these states, districts from across the state. So thank you Flagler for letting us be a part of that organization. EPAC, they had their meeting. It's always on a day that now I have three other things going on, but I read the minutes and it looked like it was fantastic. Dr. Holiday, I don't know if he's in here.
I am.
So I'm hearing good feedback. So if you're a parent that would like to participate, definitely reach out to any school board member or Dr. Holiday, but think of things that they reviewed, para-training, collaboration, family communication, anything that we can assist with to make anything better or what are we doing great? So that wraps it up. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Yeah, the training at FSBA was very rewarding and, and definitely the Niola partnership is paying off as we'll see today in some of our policy review discussions. I can't imagine having to go through that manually. So we're, we're sitting really in a good spot with that. And we have another School Board Association training coming up in December, which I'm excited about as well. So tomorrow is Dad's Take Your Children to School Day. You know, we hope that's not the only day that you might be interested in taking your children to school, but it's just a celebration of the, the father's engagement and celebration of their participation in all the things related to raising their child, including school. So we look forward to the events in the county around that. I believe some schools try to bribe you with donuts to show up. So that's great. Flagler Palm Coast High School, they are beginning to get ready for homecoming. They have their School Spirit Week, October 10th to the 17th that they're looking forward to. And then their Student Government Association is sponsoring or running a program which is, I think, an excellent one. I really, I can't recall an SGA project like this quite in recent memory, but they're calling it tie-in toes. They're raising awareness, but also supplies, donations for premies in the community. So if you're interested in supporting that, check out the FPC website. They are asking for particular items. I know we have some very crafty individuals in our community as well who can make baby blankets and hats and all of that great stuff. FPC also has, as part of their freshman orientation and building of their culture, is the Dude Be Nice Program. They're accepting nominations on a regular basis. I believe this week is the close of the September nominations and that's a really, it's a great program to highlight the positives at that school. And it's almost like caught being good recognition. As a reminder, after-school tutoring is ramping up. There are some transportation options, but also as a reminder, our county partners with, starts with the.
Varsity.
Varsity tutors, which you can take virtually. Buddy Taylor Middle School, Ms. Hanson is off to a rock star start in communication. She is theming her, I guess, initiatives under Take Flight. So it's all about the flying soaring eagles. And she's had some great outreach in the social media pages and Buddy Taylor. So if you haven't been following and you have some students at Buddy Taylor, take a second look at that page. But they recognized last week, three students who achieved a perfect score on their state assessment from last year, J.C., Jacob and Amika in math, in one of the three, math, civics or reading. So that's amazing. They also received a $5,000 grant from SAC and are upgrading their agricultural center, portion they call Land Lab. So essentially growing agriculture, but there's so much involved in that, so much science, so much math. It's really a wonderful way to bring all of the curriculum together in one space. They also had a great fun activity amongst the teachers, a cookie bake-off. So I really love the positive culture that they're building there at Buddy Taylor. And they have their first positive behavior reward dance for the students coming up October 3rd. Remember those dances are part of the PBIS program to reward students who are doing what they're supposed to be doing. And there are two teachers I'd like to highlight in their instructions and really getting hands-on activities related to science and math. That's Ms. Jones, where they're doing a lot of air resistance projects and some engineering concepts which are really creative. And Dr. Asher, who had their students, had her students building models of roller coaster to, to represent potential kinetic energy transfers. Josh Cruz Writing Club is also taking applicants at Buddy Taylor and that is going to close around, I believe, at the end of the month and the meetings are going to start October 20th. Remember that's part of that program that's run in conjunction with the Ed Foundation where students can get their, their prose, their writing published in a book. So that's wonderful. I also want to shout out the, our folks in tech and who are managing our webpages. I had requested that the African-American Mentorship Program website be updated and I see that it has with accurate information. So parents, you can go on, use our AI chat, take your right to the space, find out how you can get your students involved in that really rewarding program. This past Sunday, Live Like Cameron, it's a 503CB organization started by parents in our community whose son went through seven years of a battle to fight cancer. That organization supports children who are going through cancer treatments and they had a superhero themed 5K event. It was wonderfully attended, saw several staff members and students there. It was wonderful. And they're always looking not only for monetary donations, but items that you might donate to make a child's stay in the hospital or a parent's ability to support their child while undergoing treatments a little bit more comfortable. FTC, Ms. Swagerty, formerly Kirkland, Kirkin, as we've been very busy with some items in preparing, pulling information forward regarding the appropriations item that we are hoping to present to the board. But in addition to that, they won a grant, a $10,000 Dollar General grant to support adult learners, GED, ESOL. If you're looking into and want to know more about the programs happening at FTC, they are holding a, or going to have a booth at the Creekside Festival on October 4th. I'm also the liaison for the Value Adjustment Board. Last month, we had a meeting where we voted in the applicants for certain roles in that particular process. And then next month is the first hearing being held on October 29th. I also want to shout out transportation. You know, I worked with Mr. Deesing, Ms. Phillips in order to figure out how we can better improve communication under our current systems. And Mr. Walker reports that parent calls have drastically reduced since we collaborated and created the transportation status page and that they're continuing to look into solutions that will help personalize messaging in going forward to parents. But at least we hear that that's a wonderful change. And now they have time to provide more outreach to parents regarding the supervision of students, kindergarten students at bus stops. I will shout out, I know this is your lane, but Beltar Elementary School is actually looking for volunteers for their car rider line. You can volunteer for either morning, afternoon shift, go on their website. If you have some time to donate, please do so. I also met with Ms. Torres, the FSBA president, after her presentation as well as some community members' presentation regarding the need to, or their wish to increase some of the training for paras as well as other teacher aides. We had a rich discussion and I also followed up with Dr. Halliday. We also had a very productive conversation. I was very pleased with many of the initiatives that are being undertaken. And we have really rich resources and processes in place that Dr. Halliday is and the team at large are working to improve visibility on. And I'm really happy with the direction that's taking, going towards. And that's all I've got.
Okay. For Benell Elementary, September 25th is Dad's Take Your Child to School Day. I don't know if it's the same day for everybody or not.
I think it is.
Today at 5:30 is Benell's Title I Meeting. And the fourth and fifth grade, they also had their dance. A seven-year-old said to me, Mom, I need money for the dance. I'm like, you're not old enough. Okay. Through Capturing Kids' Hearts, every month, teachers are nominating one student from their class who exhibits positive behavior to be nominated as the big dog on campus. Students will receive a T-shirt and a yard sign delivered to their home. And October 1st is National Walk to School Day. For Wadsworth Elementary, October 24th will be their fall festival at 5:30 and they are accepting vendors. So looking forward to checking that out. And October 21st, I believe, is our date for the first student health advisory meeting at 3:00 PM. And that is all I have today.
Thank you. All right. To start off, we'll start with Old Kings and they went over their school improvement plan and also celebrated some of their wins academically in the last school year. And they've decided they needed to focus on four critical questions and areas. And those questions were, what do we want students to learn? How will we know if they learned it? What will we do if they don't learn it? What will we do if they already know it? So, and then put together some, some guiding strategies forward to answer those questions to guide the, their mission forward. Also, they were going to focus on ESSA subgroups and positive behavior intervention systems as well. So they're well on their way, I believe, to achieve their goals. And also they approved some mini-grants as well with SAC for magnetic reading curriculum and also for some dry erase boards for one of the math teachers there who has been using them to build quadrants on these boards to collectively teach math to the students where they can interact with it with dry erase markers. And it's been very effective, but he was short of boards. So they went ahead and funded that request. Also, Indian Trails, they had a great achievement for the National Junior Honors Society. They had 60 students that had qualified and were invited to that. So that was a great recognition there for academic achievement at Indian Trails Middle School. With the Chamber, I'm sorry, with the Ed Foundation, they have a popular event that supports the Josh Cruz Writing Program. And you know, the Josh Cruz Writing Project inspires young authors by giving them means by which they can write their own stories and even have them published. And this program was established in memory of Flagler Palm Coast High School's graduate, Josh Cruz, who lost his life at a very young age, but his love for the English language and people is generally, is general what the inspiration was. And every year, the Ed Foundation supports this effort by a big gala. And it's always has a theme and it, this year it's Once Upon a Quilt, a fairy tale night. Those attending are encouraged to dress in themed costumes. There'll be food and music and that's on November 15th at 6:00 PM. It'll be at the Channel Side, One Yacht Club Drive. You can find details on the Ed Foundation where you can buy tickets to support that. At the Fitzgerald Performing Arts Center, Flagler Auditorium, they have an upcoming Flagler Palm Coast High School's Variety Show. So, and that's put on by Flagler Palm Coast Drama Department. So I encourage everybody to go out and see their talents there and that is on September 25th. And for the Chamber, not a lot of updates there, but I do want to highlight something about the Chamber. You know, a lot of the members of the Chamber, well, their primary mission is to support businesses in our community and help them thrive and be prosperous. And, but one thing to point out, a lot of the members of that group also support our Ed Foundation as well. And so I really encourage the community to support our local businesses because they are giving back, not only to the, to all areas of the community, but specifically to Flagler schools. And case in point, some of the sponsors of your, of the donation of the golf cart that you mentioned are, are members there as well. So you can see they're, they're not just speaking it, they're doing it. So please support our, our local businesses that support education. And that concludes my liaison updates. So we will move on from here and that leaves us to the agenda for today. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay. Then I'd like a motion to approve the agenda as stated.
We have approval.
I have a motion by Ms. Chong.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ruddy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, hearing none, we will move forward with today's agenda. So now we open up for public comments. Is there anybody here for public comments?
Yes, we have two comments.
Okay.
Our first public comment is from Ron. Ron Long.
Okay, welcome.
Hi, my name's Ron Long. I was pretty much the primary, I was pretty much the primary organizer for the Charlie Kirk vigil that we had this weekend. It was put together in a very short time. It grew exponentially and I just wanted to come and give a formal apology to the board and to the superintendent. I apologize that you guys didn't get pulled more into the event. It just happened so fast and so quickly that it was everything I could do to keep the plate spinning. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Appreciate that.
The second comment is from Catherine Chief.
Welcome. Please come on up and have a seat.
So for mine, mine is a formal request for the addition of advanced safety for weapons detection for our schools, specifically my interest is FPC where my son is, but all schools. With what happened on September 4th, to me, it was just really terrifying because that is the one-year anniversary of the shooting at Appalachia High School. And before last year, that was not a household name, but for me it was because that was my high school, my alma mater. And when I tell you that if I asked you to find Wynder, Georgia on a map, you couldn't, but it's very similar to Flagler. Two high schools, two middle schools, couple of red lights, you're across the county. And it's growing faster than I can keep up with and it's a good thing and a bad thing at the same time, but that's life. And they also didn't have metal detectors. And when I tell you going there, it never crossed my mind that there was even a possibility of being unsafe, ever. Not possible. But September 4th, 2024, a kid brought a gun to school and shot dead four people. Students broke protocol and pulled their football coach in, ripped the shirts off their backs and tried to plug up their wounds and saw their coach take his last breath. They had to evacuate for their lives, hulls covered with blood. They tried to paint it, wash it. It didn't work. They plywooded it up, painted it white and pretended that the math hall doesn't exist. In some of the videos that came out, I saw my old locker in the background. So when I tell you September 4th, when we got that lockdown for FPC, it was terrifying. And we know now that it was a swatting call and it was unrelated, but at the same time, that young man had a weapon in the school all day with our kids. And it escalated off-campus, sure, at the McDonald's, but the only reason that we're not mourning dead kids today is because he didn't use the gun. And nobody knew and nobody could have stopped him because we don't have weapons detections at the doors. And that's not okay with me and it can't happen. And I ask you to please consider finding it and putting it in as fast as we can for weapons detection because if it can happen in Wynder, it can happen here. It is very similar circumstances, very similar communities. We didn't lock our doors. You know, we would help our neighbors, we didn't care where you come from, what you looked like, didn't matter. But if it can happen there, it's a matter of time until it can happen here and we have nothing to prevent it currently. So that's my request is that we please find somewhere within the budget, somehow the manpower to make metal detectors, weapon detections of some sort, a reality for our kids because they have to go to school. They should be safe while they're there. The staff should be safe while they're there. And from what I understand that day, we had just about what every high school principal and a bunch of our, like, board members on campus, they went through that lockdown. They see it firsthand, but how many times have our kids went through it? That's my request.
Thank you for your comments. No further, okay.
Do you want to reiterate that the board doesn't respond? Does that go back?
Yes. Superintendent Moore just reminded, I just wanted to let you know that we do hear every comment that comes to the public. We don't respond right now, but believe me, we, we do workshop these things and things like this do come back to the board for future consideration. So we appreciate all the input from the public. Okay. And so we will close the public comments and we will move on to 6.01 Student Progression Plan, Dr. O'Brien and Mr. Reynolds.
Oh, and.
I'll do my best version.
Mr. Reeves.
Mr. McFerry. More members, Superintendent Moore. Today, we're going to bring before you our. Today, we're going to bring before you our student progression plan and entertain any questions or comments or thoughts about it. This is a document that we're working through. And so I just want to walk through that, the changes and the changes that are represented aligns us with statute rule changes that come up throughout the year. This was a gentler year for K-12, and so there's not as many as we've had in the past. But I'll walk you through them and stop us at any point in time if you have any questions or concerns. The first change is on page seven, and that is in reference to our Acel checklist. If you look, we were using level five for scores in the process when we're looking at, consider for those advanced courses and opportunities. And we changed it to the 95th percentile. And the reason for that change is allows students and us to identify sooner and wait till the end. Remember math, in particular, those testing, they're testing on the end of year expectations. And so you might not see that level five until the end of the year, which would be normal. This, by doing the 95th percentile, allows us to identify students sooner and intervene quicker with opportunities for them for advanced courses. On page 12, the cleanup on that page has to do with just alignment with our K-5 versus K-6. We missed that last year. And so we identified the age ranges to make it more aligned with what we have going on with our K-5 to 6, 8 courses. And then the grading scale, you'll see there on that page as well, that just aligns with state statute on what they identify that as, as the opportunities there. Now more substantive changes is on page 13 and 14, Home Education Clarity. And that's really just to kind of help our parents as we have more and more families taking advantage of these opportunities within our community. We want to make sure they understand what the expectations and roles are for them of us as well. And so for instance, students can't go through homeschooling their entire time and then try to graduate from FPC or Matanzas. There's very specific statute where they have to align themselves with to be enrolled by the end of junior, beginning of senior year to get that opportunity for them. So just that's in place. And then on page 14, you'll see we scratched makeup work and all we've done is we've moved it into a better alignment throughout the document for our families and our educators. On page 16, we added language in part of 17 regarding PEP. And again, just trying to clarify for our families, information to kind of help them be able to make informed decisions about their students and diploma options and senior On page 18, we added some language here, just required instruction. And it's, the state is changing from year to year, different things that are noted as required instruction. So rather than trying to make a comprehensive list of everything, we covered these two statutes about, about the required instruction being taught in our schools. But we did draw out and make an exception with regard to CPR and AED training because that was very specific in the statute. So that's line item separately from that, but that is also required instruction that has to take place in one high school class and one year, one year in middle school as One other note there on page 18, it's just a small item, but it's significant, and that is around grade K-5 in the virtual instruction program, our I Flagler. While we do use FLVS curriculum, it is our instructors now. Before in the past, we contracted with Nefec for those instructors. And this gives us stronger position to work with families and accountability for our students' achievement. And so we brought that back in-house. So it's no longer virtual through that organization, it's through our own, in our own staff.
It's still FLVS, but...
FLVS curriculum.
Yeah, it's now our local teachers that are doing it, which allows for them to meet, even meet with students here face-to-face as well. So we're not contracting for that, that service. But for the, the platform, the platform did not change.
Correct. Okay. Page 23 outlines some changes just in regard to the grading system. I'm going to let, let's try to address that, of course.
So we had weighting categories in for elementary school in the progression plan previously. When we met with administrators, they shared with us that a lot of elementary teachers don't use the homework category all the time. And by not putting a grade in the homework category, it actually skews the weights into the other three categories, which puts them out of compliance with this document. So to make sure that no one's out of compliance, while we get together and we're actually putting together a task force for elementary grading to look at these categories as well. But just to make sure that no one's out of compliance, we decided to take the weights out so that teachers have a little bit more flexibility with the grades that they put in for this school year.
And the team that we put together is including teachers, administration, district staff to review this process. We're looking holistically right now, just our grading systems and platforms to bring up to date and to review processes and our teachers and the team that has played a vital role in that space.
And to provide consistency across the elementary schools.
We moved makeup work to page 23 here for our K-5 because it's specific to them. So we built that language in for that. Then on pages 34 and 35, you'll see a long list of things that are crossed out there. That has to do with recognized regional accrediting agencies. And it is a comprehensive list, but does not need to live in, live in our student progression plan. It'll be living in our school counselor hub, need to access at any time to review those documents. This comes to play of students, families transferring in and we're not sure if it's from a usual accrediting agency, we can cross check with this list to know if they are or not. Then on page 36 is our makeup work for middle school, specific to their needs. And then on page 39, adult high school. We don't, we don't have that anymore. And so we've moved that to a more appropriate location in our progression plan to address, particularly addresses when students are 18 years old and they're moving into our area and they're not on track for graduation, we give them other options for that to be a part of another process as well to go to Daytonistic College or to our Flagler Tech College for GED. Okay. And on page 40, this is where you'll start seeing language around certificate of completion. And so based on new statute, that's no longer an option. And so that language has been removed throughout the, the student progression plan. And then on page 43, there's an addition that was added this year through statute to allow two years of marching band to satisfy either one full credit of physical education or one full credit performing arts requirement. So it's allowed to be used in that space. Before it was like a half a credit and they made the exception. If you've ever been out there in the marching field, you know it's tough. A lot of work for those students and I'm glad to see the state's recognizing that for, for our students and students across the state. So they'll be able to use that in one of those categories, either PE or for their performing art requirement. Something particularly proud of this year that we're adding, it's on page 44. On page 44, we've added a diploma plus segment to our student progression plan, which outlines an expectation really from our superintendent and our board about what we want to do for our students, that as we said here often and preached, it's not enough to have a diploma, but diploma plus. And so giving our students that option, but still allowing for exemptions. And they're outlined specifically to align with some of our other things in our, our progression plan, that a written request by the parent, ESC student, the IAP team determines not aligned to students' needs or the school principal can grant an exemption. And that aligns with other documents for academic records. And then we updated the GED section on page 48. That includes our segment information aligned with statute that changed and will also be aligned with our school board policies being updated through Neola. I'll let Mr. Reynolds speak to pages, the next set of changes on page 49.
So on 49 and 50, just some language got clarified because we moved to the half-credit system. And so the way that the grade book system works with the 30% required component for ELC courses or the 20% required piece for our courses that have final exams, the calculation just kind of changed in the system. So the, that 30%, that 20% actually applies to the semester two grade instead of the full year course grade. So we just clarified that language and took out some of the calculations and that no longer applied.
Let you speak to the next pieces as well. Page 60 and 61. Then update to our concordant scores.
Yep. So on pages 60 and 61, you can see the state updated their concordant scores for Algebra I and for Grade 10 ELA. Scores come from the state and it usually takes a few years for them to update our concordant scores when the new tests come out or the new benchmarks happen because they wait until there's enough students who took both, for example, in Algebra, both took the Algebra test and took all of these other tests so they can have a correlation between the two, what actually constitutes achievement at that ninth grade Algebra I level or that 10th grade ELA level.
Then on page 68, there's some language that has been stricken by Dr. Halliday regarding the IAPs. This is sunsetted now. For students who are entering in the 2014, 15 year, remember they can attend until their 22nd birthday. And so this now is sunsetted, so we're removing this language from the student progression And then lastly, page 72, a student with disability receives a certificate of completion as an IAP requires, that's been stricken as well because we do not do the certificate completion anymore. Any, any questions?
I appreciated the time to converse about this because it's a rather big document, a lot of changes, affects every student, every teacher in our county. I would, as we've discussed, encourage you to continue to, in evaluating our grading system, especially for those high school courses, kind of do a cross-state analysis as all of our students are competing for those same limited number of spaces for college, career, you know, even army, right? The Armed Forces, they, they, they want to take a look at your grade level and I think part of that as that test. So I also think it would be helpful if you could speak on some of the discussion we had related relative to the certificate of completion and the diploma that is available for students who are on the alternative standards access points.
Absolutely. Dr. Halliday's going to join us for that segment.
Welcome, Dr. Halliday.
Hi, Dr. Ian. So particularly related to our students on access points, you're, you're curious about what the difference in the diploma is?
I just want to make sure that there's clarity on what the statute has changed because I think there's some anxiety that Florida is removing that, that diploma option for our IEP students.
Sure. So for our students that are eligible for alternate assessment, which is less than 1% of all of our students, they are, they are on a programmatic path called access points. Access points are still generalized curriculum, it's just how they're accessing the curriculum versus taking in the entire curriculum that we would expect our general education students to do. It is still a standard diploma. So along with all of the other options for our individuals with disabilities and without disabilities, it is another option. It's just exclusively for our students that we have determined have the most significant cognitive disability and they're unable to access the curriculum, the full generalized curriculum.
Right. And this diploma of completion essentially was a, you know, almost a timeout, almost like a certificate of participation, which is going away.
The previous one.
The previous one, right? And the alternatives there are if you're not successful even as a gen ed student, an IEP student, we may direct you to GED options. Is that my understanding?
Well, we're going to work hard. We have, we have grad 100 coaches on both of our campuses that work very diligently to make sure our students are all graduating. And that's evident by our increasing graduation rate. There are students that might take a management 18-hour option versus the 24. So there's several options. There's also the CTE option. So there's a number of opportunities the state has laid out that Flagler offers our students to kind of help them stay on track. So they do graduate with a diploma and hopefully diploma plus.
And what we can do, because this will come back before you, we will pull the information so that we can tell you how often this has been used. It is, the certificate of completion has not been one that we in Flagler County have traditionally used a lot, right? It is available, but some of the other ways, but we can bring that information.
But we've been very aggressive with the grad.
We actually looked at the class of 2024, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Because class of 2025 isn't finalized yet until the grad cohort process ends in December. But the 2024 class, we had two ESC students who got a certificate of completion and both of those students were hospital homebound students who just weren't on our campuses to be able to take those assessments. It wasn't because of the disability.
Right. It wasn't a formal, I mean, hospital homebound is a formal disability, but they're not eligible for some of the waivers and some of the other options.
There were other extended reading circumstances. So we've been very proactive in ensuring students graduate with a diploma of substance. And so this is going to affect us almost not.
Yeah. So it will have an impact on others maybe across the state, but for us, it is not one of the practice. We want our, our students to graduate with a high school diploma.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions about the progression plan?
I like that the diploma plus is in here. One thing I noticed, other counties, they don't, they, they may have, you know, ACE and dual enrollment, but they have separate facilities for, you know, allied help or for music or for whatever it may be. So I like how we can include it all because we are still that small district growing, but I, I appreciate it that it's in here. So thank you.
Okay. Great. Thank you for that presentation.
Absolutely.
All right. So we're going to move on now to 6.02, Flagler Youth Orchestra. And Mr. Reeves, are you going to stay with us here?
Just for a little bit more. So thank you for the opportunity to come and share with you about our youth orchestra. It's been a couple of years. And I just want to give you an update of where we're at, both programmatically and financially and some next steps that we're working towards. So if you turn the slide, enrollment right now is 183 and growing. And that is where we ended above last year. And that's re-enrollment from the previous year, as well as we do an elementary FYO tour at the beginning of each year. We're pretty excited about that. We're going to probably move that to the spring next year, when it's a little less chaotic for principals as they're trying to get all those first-day procedures down. And a little more downtime where we can actually push, push into that space. So excited about that. Also excited to tell you that all of our Flagler schools are represented in, in our youth orchestra. So all of our public schools are participants in that. We have seven staff members and you can see that there, from executive director to foundational instructors. Performances we are still doing are three concerts a year, the fall, winter and spring held at our Flagler Auditorium, some proud partners of ours. And we established our quartet, the Orange Blossom Quartet is the name of the group. And that is a student premier group that goes out and does outreach and fundraising events within the community. And they communicate through our website, through our district website, which is up to date. They provide weekly newsletters to the members as well as working on our social media platform for Facebook and such. Financial information, there you can see the, the past three years, going to our third year now for our general fund support, which we're grateful for. And the internal FYO account, the balance beginning in, for us, 2024 is about $7,800. Currently, as of August 30th, we're seeing around $5,400. And in addition to that, worked with our finance department to confirm that we did some financial audits. It's now part of the annual review. And there was no findings in 2324 and preliminary, there are no findings for 2425. That final has not come out yet, but preliminary, they're showing no findings. The funding generation outside of the general fund support is through fundraising, donations, concert rental fees for instruments and concerts. If you recall, we did raise our concert prices to 2425 to, from $10 to $12 and $5 to $7 for students. And we're currently reviewing our rental fees and service. Right now, we only charge $15 annually to rent our equipment. But we do offer scholarships to families. offer scholarships to families that aren't able to provide, so no one goes without, if they say they're interested in being a part of that. Of course, because it's an internal organization within Flagler schools, there's no use of facilities at cost to that, and as I brought before the board, the last meeting, that we were the generous receivers of a gift of just over twenty-five thousand dollars. And we'll be, we're working with Amerisour Bank and our finance department to set that up tomorrow, to get those funds deposited and earning some interest. And of course, any shortfall from the general fund is made up through the internal account, and has done so for the last two years. And then lastly, just some highlights, we've increased the structure, extending the rehearsals for our top groups performing to give them more substance and opportunities, relaunching our quartet. I'm proud to say that in our continued quest to try and find a way into state competition, one of our recent hires, our artistic director, she is a certified teacher in music, and she is aligning with C Palms the coursework and the rubrics, so that students are actually working on the performing arts that aligns with what we provide to the state. So very excited for that, and tracking and establishing lesson plans for that, so, and then we've refreshed our logo on the board as well. Any questions about that plan?
So I have a question in regards to the outside general fund support. So initially, there was a certain expectation that they raised to a certain dollar amount, and has that continued? Has it gone down? Where's the fundraising element of this contribution? Because we take care of the instruction, through the contract that we have with the independent contractors. Our general fund's paying for the instructor.
Most of, most of. There's still a shortfall.
Right. And then that was supposed to, that shortfall would come through their fundraising effort. How's that been? Has it been consistent?
Last year, we raised about twelve thousand dollars to our concerts, which is a fundraising event. It's about four thousand dollars an event. In addition to that, they, we go out and perform, we connect with the Ed Foundation. If they have requests come through, and the quartet may go out, there might be a five hundred donation here, there might be other vendors supplying strings and those kind of things, equipment to the organization. So for the last two years going into our third year, they have made up the difference between the contracts and the general fund amount, so that we have a balance moving forward. So you see that amount there. The general fund covers about seventy, seventy-five percent of the contracts, and then the F Y O raises the remaining dollars to cover that, plus of a balance left over.
Okay. And through that account, now who, the disbursements from that account, for the, how are those being handled currently?
Certainly. So that's done through our internal process, and we have a procedure for that. So for instance, if they need something done, or need a check, it's a two-signature required for that, that goes through myself and my secretary, or through the finance department, for our two signatures.
Very good. So all expenditures out of that account are being reviewed by the district?
Correct, as well as being independently audited, and that no longer lasts two years.
Very good. Excellent. Good to hear that.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
No, it's a wonderful program, and I think it's right that we provide equity for the type of musical instrument. You know, band is woodwinds and brass, and this is strings, so it's nice to have that offering, which is also something that cannot be easily duplicated outside of the school system. And it's Arts in Education Week, and Ms. Fulmer has been posting tons of stats related everywhere from academic performance to low incidences of behavior or referrals, greater success in concentration and focus, less screen time for students who play musical instruments, and so we probably are reaping a lot of financial rewards by not expending funds that would otherwise be directed to those, you know, redirected initiatives in supporting students. So I applaud our ability to do this, and it's a rich resource for our students that not every district can provide, and is one of those items that helps to highlight us as a premier organization.
Absolutely. And I encourage you to come and visit to one of the concerts. We've been amazed.
Wonderful, yeah.
They are exceptional students, led by a great group of people, so.
Fantastic. Thanks for that update, Mr. Reeves, appreciate it. Okay, so we'll move on to seven point zero-one, Student Teacher Affiliation Agreement with the University of West Florida, and we have Mr. Olet going to join us.
Mr. Chiselle.
Oh, Mr. Chiselle, okay. Gotcha. Didn't have your name on it, Mr. Chiselle. Thank you for being here today.
Good afternoon, Board Superintendent Moore. University of West Florida's reached out to us, and we have the opportunity to establish a partnership with them, under which U W F students may participate in teaching, internships, practicums, and classroom observations at schools located in the Flagler County School District. This partnership will support the professional development of future educators and serve as a strategic initiative to recruit highly qualified teachers to our district. So they have had some teachers or some candidates that are currently living in our area, and they're looking to use us as a way of providing them with the internships that they're going to need to receive their teacher certificates.
Section five, under background checks, it says check applicable one. There are two that are selected, where its agency shall be responsible for completing any background checks of each student that is required by law, or agency must coordinate any required background check directly by student. Is it optional? Are we going to do this as a case-by-case basis as to who is supposed to do the background checks? And is there a process in which if you, if the University of West Florida, sounds like they're doing the background check?
We will.
Okay.
They'll go through our background check process, are the same process that we take everybody through, and then they actually, the student, whoever is the person that's going to be on our campuses, they are required to pay for that as well.
And remembering too, that now that we have a universal system, if they've already, for some reason, received a background check, then we would receive that as long as it's within that office system.
So Mr. Delaney, under section five there, is it supposed to be where we're just checking one, or is it appropriate that there are two options selected there?
I think it's appropriate that there's more than one option, that it gets all that way.
How many students are we, does this look like initially we're going to be hosting?
I'm not sure. What they do is they will reach out to us to get the agreement signed. So our process is, once we receive the initial contract, M O U, then we pass that on to our lawyer, who then will review it. After Sven has reviewed it and made adjustments, then we send it back to U W F for them to make corrections to whatever that M O, whatever Sven came up with, and then they'll send it back, and then we bring it to you for approval.
That was my second question, is I think the M O U is the new version he created. This is not, this is.
This is, this is the new version. This is the one, we sent it off, Sven looked at it, and we sent it back.
At the bottom of it, it says O G C approval revised October two thousand twenty-four, but if he just updated the new one, should it have a different date? The bottom, bottom, like of the actual form?
The footnote.
Oh, and the footnote.
Yeah.
And the footnote. I'm not sure if that's there. I do know for a fact, we sent this off, had it re, I've got it suspended.
And this is the most updated version?
This is the most updated version.
Okay, awesome. Well, it's exciting that we have folks who are still, you know, interested in going into the teaching profession, and we're happy to help cultivate that, that career choice for them, yeah?
And I can't say we've had several other universities reaching out over the last six months or so. We're still waiting on.
U C F?
U C F. We've reached out to them multiple times, however, we have not received any communication back from them. The last we did was we had Sven review it, made some corrections, we sent it in, and their attorneys are still looking at it. We've reached back out, and they said that it's still illegal, so.
For these students, I know we don't have students yet from them, but I know we utilize this for other places. Do we know, or is there a way to find out how many we have currently active? Like, you know, we have one from this college and one from this one, because I'm wondering, I'm just trying to think, what if, you know, potentially, you know, we want them to stay, right? So when they graduate, could we invite them to, when we have all faculty events, you know, like kickball, or, you know, whatever it may be, and then say, oh, this is a.
Well, a lot of this happens at the school level. No smart principal will let a good intern get by, so, but I can get numbers as far as who's active and where they're from. You know, unfortunately, right now, the only, the only ones that we have with that paid option are the ones coming from Daytona State, so that allows us to kind of move them in a different direction. And I'd love to see, you know, some of the other schools approach us with that. But no, absolutely, I'm, you know, speaking as a former principal, you don't let an intern, a good intern, get away, so, but I will get numbers for you.
Because I know Rimfire, remember, they had the very first apprenticeship student in, what did she get, Rookie of the Year? I mean, so this is great.
No, as far as the apprentices, I mean, we've hired and kept, you know, multiple apprentices.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reeves. All right, so that moves us forward now to eight point zero-one, Office of Safe Schools' Compliance Report. And we have Mr. David Bossedett.
It's actually going to be me.
Oh, you did.
Mr. Bossedett, we didn't know if he was going to make it back in time. He was actually with the Office of Safe Schools, as well as supporting a school with an emergency that they were having. So the Office of Safe Schools is required to conduct safety and security inspections for each of our schools at least once every three years. Each quarter, the district must share the findings of these inspections with the school board. In addition, during the first quarter of each school year, the district is required to provide the total number of schools inspected in the previous year, along with the number of schools found to be in full compliance at a public meeting. During the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, the Office of Safe Schools inspected eight of our schools. Six of those schools were found to have no deficiencies, as reported to you last year. Three deficiencies were identified, all of which were corrected without a need for a reinspection. Two of the findings were managerial findings, or the hard copies of training certificates being available upon request, and as well as the monthly notes missing for one month. And so those were immediately corrected within twenty-four hours, and there was not a need for reinspection. And then this third finding was the new principal, we talked about this, the new principal at Old Keene's had not completed the day one of the threat management training, had done the day two within the sixty days, and so that was also corrected. Actually, the Office of Safe Schools came and supported us in making that correction. So this is the report for last year. At this time, we have not had any inspections this year.
Okay.
And we will bring this back to you each quarter.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Moore. Okay, so that will move us on to ten point zero-one, Board Policy Update. We have Marcus Santaliboe.
Good afternoon. What's good?
What's good?
And before Mr. Santaliboe and Attorney Smith begin, most of these recommended updates are updates that have come as a result of legislation. There is one update that comes as a matter of a board member request. We have provided you some language to consider. It is the purview of the board in order to address any of that language and make any changes and recommendations, of course, also in collaboration with Attorney Delaney.
Perfect. Before you, there are forty-seven total policies to review. As Ms. Moore said, one is revised based on a board member request, the other forty-six are based on NEOLAs. Forty of them are revision, seven are technical corrections, and their technical corrections are some corrections that are non-substantive. And they do change, all the changes are based on, you know, state statute, state board, and just the different information. Of the seven technical corrections, you'll see the first three are things that are with Twitter. There was actually seven, I think, with Twitter, six Twitter corrections, but we caught some before we went into the August adoption, so there was only three that we needed to update. We have a correction spelling when it came to twenty-four thirty-one oh one, participation by transfer students, correction with an addition of some heading changes in twenty-four fifty-five with dropout prevention. If I go too fast, please let me know. And policy five-three-three-zero-point-zero-one, we had some references to another board policy, and then fifty-four-ten-oh-one, the promotion, some changes with capitalization. So again, they're all technical changes for those, that's why I kind of quickly do those. Next section, if you go to the next slide, it says standards of ethical conduct. On here, it was just Senate Bill three forty-eight, talked about stolen valor, adding that, so we added that into that policy, and then our policy bylaws of one-three-one. Again, there were some changes based on Senate Bill one oh eight, where we need to go through there and make some changes in that. And then they did change the definition of technical change in Senate Bill one oh eight, and so we updated that to match the definition that is going to be amended in Florida Statute Then we go into some more lovely changes for employment. Again, in three different policies, if you recall, our policies, we do have the one thousands for administration, the three thousands, which are instructional staff, and the four thousand, which are support staff. So when we change one, it many times will impact all three, and that's what happened in this case, when they removed the January first, two thousand twenty-five date, deadline, responsibility, and then adding some language for individuals who apply for employment are governed by the law and rules in effect at the time of application or employment, provided continuing of employment is maintained. So some language added there. Then again, when we look at policies eleven-twenty-one-oh-one, thirty-one-twenty-one-oh-one, forty-one-twenty-one, eighty-four-seventy-five, based on a House bill, there was some, again, changes with that as well, with background checks and some things that are going through the clearinghouse. And then educator misconduct, when you look at eleven-thirty-nine and thirty-one thirty-nine, there were some changes based on self-reporting and the timeframe of self-reporting, and then a new requirement in thirty-one thirty-nine specifically when it came to instructional staff, and the removal of classroom when we get notification of them being arrested. So some very specific changes there. Then you look at twelve forty-two and thirty-two forty-two, again, based on a statute change from one-zero-one-two-point-nine-eight. They changed the Florida education leadership standards, they explicitly wrote that in there, and they removed student, state's educational leadership standards from that portion, as well as some different language, as well as that pertain to the standard for materials. And when you look at twenty-two fifteen and twenty-four seventeen, in our programs of instruction and comprehensive health, I know this came up when we were talking about board policies originally, there was some language added about C P R, first aid and A E D use, in once in middle school and once in high school. So again, that's in our policy, and then some information about student aid. When you look into twenty-two sixty for nondiscrimination and access to equal opportunity, there was, again, some language in-service training, and that was changed to professional learning and training, and some deletion of administrative professional classroom staff, just again, change in definition in that policy. Then you look at physical education, which is policy twenty-two eighty, this goes to, exactly what Mr. Reeves was talking about with the two years of marching band, and the physical education and doing performing arts, that was added to the policy, again, to look at statute. And then you look at twenty-four-ten, and there was some language in there about trainings for anaphylaxis trainings, and then having a student emergency action plan when it comes to K through eight, so that language was added, and then we had discussion exactly how to make sure that is implemented appropriately. Then you look at twenty-four twenty-one, again, because of a House bill and a Florida statute change, we had some language added about the Florida Gold Seal, scholarship added, and then some money-back guarantee, we had to identify three different programs with refund of the cost of tuition for our F T I, our F T C program from there. Again, those were identified in policy. And for the sake of the public, and like I said, all these policies the boards have, we have them all redlined, and it was shared with all the boards, so when you look for detail, just as I'm going through, I'm realizing I'm going quickly through some of these, not showing all the information, but all that has been shared. Then you have the policy twenty-four thirty-one, again, based on Florida statute, two different Florida statutes, there's some requirement changes, it goes back to our E C G and participation in our sports, so that was updated to match kind of a little bit what we already had, NEOLAs use for their stuff, and then we modified it to meet statutes, so that worked out really well for us, we're already ahead of the game, ahead of the curve on that. We're already ahead of the game, ahead of the curve on that. Then you look at thirty-one thirty, deployment assignment, transfer promotion of instructional staff. Again, qualifications for instructional personnel and teacher preparation programs. These revisions are based on another, uh, change to statute one-zero-zero-four-point-zero-four. Teachers' Bill of Rights in policy thirty-seven hundred. Again, it specifies that teachers and other instructional personnel may designate an area for wireless communication devices during instructional time for students in grades nine through twelve. So we added that language to the policy so that it matches Florida statute. And as you know, we did, again, uh, re-modify our stat, our policies for wireless communication devices, right, for, uh, the adoption to match the new statute requirements already. So those revisions were part of this policy, uh, update, but we didn't have these already. Again, one step ahead of the game. And policy five-two-two-three, there was language added to work with the expanded protection of parent-student's rights, a removal requirement, um, and a, um, a demarcation release that we have in a condition for participation in relation to instruction. And then graduation requirements for fifty-four sixty, um, specifies that student with a disability has declared an intent to earn a certificate completion. Again, the conversation that happened earlier with, uh, Dr. Halliday, there was language with an update in statute that we put into our policy to match. Policy fifty-five fourteen was a revision of the entire policy. It was previously known as use of bicycles, and it talked about bicycles only. Now the policy was revised to talk about just basic transportation for personal transportation, bicycles for students. So looking at scooters, looking at e-bikes, looking at bicycles, looking at skateboards. So a much language was added in there to, you know, protect the students from this. Drug prevention, so you look at policy five-five-three-zero, um, this was a, fentanyl is added to the definition of drug, so that was added to the policy, as well as August twenty-first being fentanyl awareness and education day, which we did celebrate, uh, this, or celebrated record, I essentially said, in August of this year. Student conduct for fifty-five hundred includes a provision stating that before the expiration date of the expulsion period, the superintendent shall determine based upon the determination of the threat management team whether the expulsion period should be extended, and if the expulsion period is extended, what educational services will be provided. Again, that is based on language directly in the state statute one-zero-zero-six-point-one-three. Looking at fifty-six hundred, policy fifty-six hundred, which is suited discipline, goes into principals or that are designated, must give now, now give full consideration to the recommendation for discipline made by a teacher, other instructional staff, or a bus driver. So looking at that, as well as looking, we do have a discipline matrix and aligning those so that they're in compliance. As well as looking at policy six-six-six-one, uh, this revision includes changing, uh, the purchase cycle from, uh, the first two years of the adoption to the first three years of adoption, and revision to the priority of allocation remedial and supplemental instructional resources to students. Again, this is based on two different state statutes, one-zero-zero-six-point-zero-nine and one-zero-zero-eight-point-two-five. Statutes are so exciting. Emergency management, which is policy eight-four-two-zero, again, this was, uh, a Senate Bill fourteen-seventy, and it just changed some of the, the language when it looked at locked doors, locked door requirements, and school safety requirements and inclusion zones. So again, our policy was just amended to match the, that state, uh, the Senate Bill. Eighty-four fifty-two is our AEDs, which is automated external defibrillators. Again, there was new, this was a new statute that was implemented, and we just changed our policy to align with this new statute. Um, so that information is in there, and then there's other, two other policies that talk about, um, CPR as well, which is twenty-two fifteen and twenty-four seventeen. Eighty-four fifty-two, which is student abuse and abandonment, it talks about the human trafficking requirement that is, uh, part of, uh, statute one-zero-one-two-point-zero-one, and that is just in our policy. We're working on making sure that we're in compliance with that new, uh, statute as well. And then eighty-eight hundred is, uh, policy for religious and other ceremony observations, which is taking January twenty-seventh as Halloween, cause it's Remembrance Day. Again, that was on statute six-eight-three-point-one-nine-six. Policy ninety-two hundred includes a statutory reference, uh, in one of the background screening options, and that was included. And then ninety-eight hundred had four different areas where we worked on with charter schools, uh, and it talks about, uh, heading up a vision to the charter school governing board requirement section, specifying that a landlord of a charter school or his or her spouse, or an officer, director, or employee, or the entity that is landlord of the charter school, or his or her spouse may not be a member of the governing board of the charter school unless the charter school was established pursuant to that statute. And then requiring that a charter school and its contractor be provided access to school district student information system unless prohibited by Florida or federal laws. And then requiring that the school board provide a charter school-coordinated screening and process progress monitoring student results in the same manner as provided to other public schools in the school district. And a new funding section outlined the school board's responsibility to provide certain information to charter schools pertaining to shared revenues generated by the discretionary half cents cert tax, voted district school operating mileage, and non-voted district school improvement mileage.
And before we go to the board member requests, um, all of these statutory changes, if they were July one or August fifteenth, they, they rolled in at different dates. Uh, we have changed our procedures to ensure that we were in compliance with this, and now we are making sure that board policy aligns. And so these policies, we are requesting for advertisement of them. And so they will go out for advertisement, and then they will come back before you. So that's what we will be requesting is advertisement.
So you're saying that the practices, the processes in which you are enforcing these have already been modified?
If they are, were a statutory, um, date established within the statute, yes.
Thank you.
And were these all recommendations that came down through Neola?
Yes, they're all recommendations from Neola. Um, they had more than the forty-six that were provided, but the forty-six only were impacted to the, uh, the policy that we put in place.
And how many did we, if you have this data, did we have to modify after their recommendation of language? Was there a, a lot of them?
Well, there was, yeah, just after their, their recommendation, um, no, we took most of their language the way it was. We, we did adjust it to, you know, Flagler, but we took most of it.
Yeah, just looking at the efficiency of the, of how they're sending it to us, if we're having to spend a lot of time.
No.
Okay, so it, the language they gave us worked after reviewed by our legal counsel, and we're good.
And with our teams, yes, so we met with our teams, and each, each department was able to go over those policies to look at the way that was implemented, how we at Flagler go and work. And then most of it, I'd say over ninety percent of it was taken at face value from Neola.
Well, that's a good, uh, first test of, uh, the initial effort, and then the follow-up behind it, so that, that's.
And, and thinking that, you know, had you as a board not gone through this practice, um, these would be policies that we would have had to identify individually and make, um, changes. And so, uh, they work as a support to us identifying, they send it in with the appropriate policy number, all of, um, all of that. So, um, those are for, for advertisement based on statutory changes. And then that rolls us into the last one, which is a board member request to potentially add language to the existing policy of ninety-seven hundred, which, um, addresses relations with special interest groups. Okay?
Uh, can I, I have a couple of questions on a few. Uh, can we go to five-two-two-three, uh, the absences for religious instruction? Item A, um, the way it has been corrected says, "A statement attesting that the religious instruction is not provided at a time that conflicts with the student's attendance, attendance at school." I had conferred with Mr. Delaney, uh, because this sounds backwards to me, um, but, and maybe he can, um, add, but it sounds like the, we're not, um, whether or not it conflicts is irrelevant, right? So we don't even need to request this from the parent, it's the parent's right to just say, "I'm having my child attend this," and that's it. So do we even need A in that section?
Um, I, I think that the other language, I, I think it's, as it's presented, it aligns with the statute.
So a statement attesting that the original, uh, uh, the religious instruction is not provided at a time that conflicts. So they're saying, hey, this class, it doesn't conflict with my student's algebra class, so I want them to take it. But my understanding is that's irrelevant, because they're allowed to, it would be an excused absence.
Right, so I think that that used to be the kind of information that districts or schools would ask of parents, and I think this policy is putting district staff on notice that that information is no longer required or relevant.
But it does, it says, "The signed written request shall include the following." We're asking of the parent a statement. So why would we need this if it's not required?
Are you taking the five-two-two-three?
Yeah, part A.
Well, I'm, I'm just looking at the revision.
Yeah, it says.
It removes the requirement that a parent guardian must identify, release the school board as a condition to participating in religious instruction. These revisions are intended to align with, uh, Florida's expanded protections of parent-student rights.
I, I'm just, I'm looking at the specific language.
Where is it?
Just click on the link and it will open it up, so letter A, it used to say does not conflict, and now it's updated to conflicts. So that's what she's referring to, A.
Uh, but not in the, in the PDF that we're looking at here?
No, correct, not in the presentation.
So it's the same resource that you would have had to look at in order to evaluate this?
Let me go to my email.
Board docs, yeah.
Now I know where you're at.
You can go directly to board docs and look at drafts of policies.
And you'll see the red versus green, but you have to be logged in.
Yes, you have to be logged in.
I could see the piece for the liability, uh, which is B, "A statement of acceptance of the parent guardian or adult student for any liability that may arise as the conduct while on release." And then the last is, "Hold harmless the personal property." But I'm guessing, I'm wondering, why do we need a statement from the parent, whether it does or does not conflict with, um, time of a particular class, because it's irrelevant? Did we, the, the green part that says now conflicts, was that Flagler County, or was that Neola? That, that, that could.
Neola.
Okay, so that's probably something that can.
So what we can do is, we will, wait, hold on, follow up on this one, and we'll advertise this.
Am I the only one reading this way? Cause it seems weird, okay.
We will get clarification on that.
I'm happy to, if, correct it in my thinking. Um, the other item is.
Do you have a comment about that?
Yeah, but, but forgive me, I don't mean to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
Uh, yes, um, thank you, uh, board member, or chair, for, um, I, I think what that, what this statement is, is a balance between the parent's requirement to have the student attend school, which they are required to do by Florida statute, and then at the same time, the school's responsibility to educate the student. So I think this statement is, um, is, um, weighing the, or balancing between those, um, those two interests there, um, and those, or those two requirements.
So it, but it, the way it reads, it says that it's a statement attesting that this instruction is not conflicting with instructional time. I thought that they're allowed to miss class for religious instruction to a particular extent? I don't know, it doesn't seem that way, but, so if.
I think they are on a temporary basis, but I think if it became like a permanent thing, that would become an issue.
Right, because then you're essentially saying you're un-enrolling this student, but.
But if it, if it does conflict, that they have to submit with these items in.
Okay, and so that's what I was wondering, shouldn't the, uh, process be, "I require action if it does conflict, not if it does not conflict?"
And we, I will get clarification, I read this as you, "I require action if it does conflict."
Is not provided at a time that conflicts. It just seems it would be, I, I preferred the original way, like, it makes more sense there. But I was, either way, I was wondering if we even need that, because they have the right. All they have to do is submit that, uh, like, do they even need to self-identify that is for religious instruction?
But if it's, um, being excused versus not, the documentation for such would be needed. So parents are given their regular parent notes, but if, um, this would be above, if they wanted to use one of their parent notes for it, whatever, right? That's fine. But if they were above the parent note, they would provide this if it is happening at a time that conflicts with their attendance, and then that's how it would be excused.
Yeah, this is a statement that's trying to take account for the parental responsibility to have their child in school.
So the last, uh, under that paragraph, where it says, "Upon receipt of the signed written request and provided the religious group church or denominations responsible for religious instruction submits evidence in writing of the student's registration." So that's where it's like, well, if you have the submission of the registration, do you need the statement from the parent, I guess? So, but we're saying, or Florida statute's saying we need both.
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
So you're good with that the way it is?
And we will still get, um, yeah, we will still get confirmation, but that's how we, we have been made.
The other item, I'm interested in hearing from the board, um, kind of the philosophy or direction we want to take on fifty-five hundred. So fifty-five hundred, um, let me, let me open it. Yep, sorry, I have. It's fifty-five hundred, student conduct, and specifically the paragraph under zero tolerance policy. Paragraph one, two, three, four. "The superintendent shall determine based upon the determination of the threat management team whether the expulsion period should be extended, and if the expulsion period is extended, what educational services will be provided. A recommendation to extend the expulsion period must be provided to the student and parents in accordance with blah, 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 blah." So, um, our current process is that the disciplinary team, uh, when there is an expulsion, brings it to the board for a vote. My, um, comprehension of this is that, let's say that process has happened, and now, for whatever determination, maybe they're not successful, maybe they've had another incident, and the superintendent, uh, wishes to extend the amount of time of that expulsion. The written here, it's, sounds as if, um, and the intent is that that would not come up for a vote with the school board. So, um, is it the philosophy of the school board that, uh, the superintendent and the leadership staff make those determinations on whether a student is appropriately, uh, able to, uh, at the safety of other students, be on campus? And if so, why are we requiring a vote on the initial, uh, expulsion or suspension, but not on the expansion of that expulsion? Does that make sense? Okay.
And I, I think I can address that one. So, um, if, this language comes from one thousand six-point-one-three, and then there's a paragraph three C underneath it, and it's, there's mandatory language in there that says, "Before this expiration of the automatic expulsion for bringing a weapon to campus is concluded, the superintendent shall determine." So it's not may, it says, it is putting that responsibility on the superintendent, even though that does not align with typical expulsion decisions. Um, so the superintendent makes the call under the, under the statute, whether it shall be extended, and then the right goes to the parent to challenge that under chapter one-twenty, the Administrative Procedures Act, uh, to request, uh, hearing either before the board, for an administrative law judge, on a limited basis. It's not a, uh, they're not rehashing all the facts, the facts are determined to be, you know, evaluated, and the, the facts are fixed. It's just, is an administrative law judge or the board going to make a different interpretation about the superintendent's recommendation, or not recommendation, the superintendent's determination of whether it should be extended?
And all of that you're saying is, um, within the statute itself, but is not spelled out within our particular policy? Because I did not see that particular language here.
Right.
Policy references.
I'm not, I don't remember that the policy references, references one thousand six-point thirteen, but this is directly from, this is where that policy is pulled from.
But in, in my mind, it does beg that question, right? Whether, uh, even upon the initial expulsion, is it the philosophy of the board that the board should have that ultimate determination, or, uh, along with this, we are leaving that up to the superintendent and their leadership staff? Or along with this, we are leaving that up to the superintendent and their leadership staff?
Well, we still, we still have to approve the.
You approve the initial. Statutorily, you must approve the initial expulsion. Beyond that, if it is to be extended, it then goes into my lane.
Right, and so, it's saying, an extension, it does not need approved, that's outside.
Unless the superintendent's extension is challenged by the parent, and the parent has to be put on notice of it. And then, it could become before the board or an administrative law judge.
And you're saying that that particular caveat does not need to be added to the policy because it's Florida statute?
I think so. I mean, there's a lot of policies here. That's always a balancing act. If we recreate what is in Florida statute in all of the policies, the policies are going to triple that.
Well, I mean, it is frequent, right? They do, they are to mirror.
But it's a remedy, right? It's a remedy available to the family on not just this issue, but others as well, that this applies to. When you go back to appeal to the board, or is that statute, is that specific statute specific to this circumstance?
That statute is specific to this circumstance, where the superintendent might make an extension based on the threat management assessment.
No, I meant on the remedies of the parent to come and challenge and come before the board.
That's available in other circumstances.
Right, so there's already, that's a broad remedy for the family, for their, I, so I think that's the answer.
And they would be able to, because, you know, if, we don't want disparate information, right? So, if a family has to go through this unfortunate situation, would they be, they be going to our policy manual? Would it be clear that, oh, they've just had an expansion to the expulsion? Is it clear that they should, what their options are? Even if we don't spell it out, do we say, parents have options under one thousand six point one thirteen or something? But I, I think that goes beyond, that's like a next level thing. I'm curious if the board is, well, the philosophy of, hey, you know, if the superintendent and the staff are going to manage those expulsions, do we even need to have the initial expulsion voted on?
The initial expulsion is voted on by statute. You have to, we have to bring that.
The statute doesn't have it here.
Right, the statutes do not align with who has that responsibility at those two different stages.
And that may change in the future, because they may recognize that discrepancy.
Maybe. I appreciate your optimism.
Yes, which is, which I think is one zero zero six point zero eight, which is referenced in the, in the staff, in the policy. The one zero zero six point zero eight, which talks about the board's approval of the expulsion.
What, if I may, what may be a solution, I think, would be helpful to everybody being on notice of the process, without expanding the language of the policy itself, just simply citing to one thousand six point thirteen.
Yes.
Might be helpful.
That's what I'm thinking.
As a reference policy.
Because it would trigger somebody to go look and cross-reference that.
Okay.
Yes.
If that's appropriate.
It just, we're just putting a link to the statute or a reference to that statute?
Yeah, we'll reference the.
The authorization at the bottom.
Yep, at the bottom.
And that was actually, we talked about that at our policy with Neola, that some districts are putting links to procedures, because policies are one thing, but then, procedures are another. So, that could follow down more to procedure base on what the district does. So, then, parents that do want to look up and research on their own, they have the ability, or the chat bot, whatever it may be.
And when parents are in this situation, they are provided this information.
Yes, and one zero zero six point one three is referenced at the top of the policy under legal, with the statutes that are there. But if you'd like, I can add it right to the end of that sentence so that they have it as well.
And this, my question is, for this specific one, was that Neola's, that's their portion of the template? So, and just, I mean, we spent several, several hours in, you know, other districts in, I mean, I do. I see what you mean, what you're saying.
I just want to be, I just want to be careful, because the point of a school board is policy. If we're going to say, well, we're just going to blindly adopt, oh, did Neola say this? Okay, let's go with them. Then, again, let's save the county two hundred thousand dollars and remove the school board, right? So, I feel that we shouldn't be just say, well, if Neola said it, I don't think there's anything wrong. But I'm just saying, hey, as a whole, I just want to bring awareness that we should be looking at these in depth. I don't think there should be a hesitancy to modify or amend or clarify.
If Neola did not write this, and this was our staff, and they did, then I would like to know, what was the reason that you wrote this? If they felt that was needed. So, that's why I'm asking, because there's a big difference.
Sure.
Because if they, if they decided to edit it, you know, there has to be a reason. So, if they did.
That was prefaced. These were Neola revisions, with the exception of the one square board request.
Yeah, I think it's all, it's always worthy of discussion. You're absolutely right. We are here to make a lot. This is a, this is just, Neola is a, is a tool that we are using.
That we have access to edit.
And they give us certain warranties by using their language, but they made it clear that we can modify, and they will still warranty their policy if they review and they accept the changes we put in. It's just a matter of whether it's worthy of modifying. I agree, but, and I think that there was good discussion on this here. And ultimately, if we're talking about the same thing, is that, you know, when a parent is in this situation, automatically, usually, if they care about it, their first question is, well, what's my next step? What is my next remedy? We're going to point them that direction. Or if they have an advocate, or if they have an attorney for, in some cases, they will, they will take it down. I mean, there's always that element of, the individual needs to seek the information, right? We want to make it as easy as possible, but it, you know, it can't be on every single policy. But I have no, I don't see any problem, as long as it doesn't provide any, any legal issue with the policy adding a link to it, to that remedy, if it's available.
Yeah, it doesn't even have to be a link. It'd just be like, you know, also importance to.
A reference to the, to the staff. I think that, that's, there's no harm, no foul.
And Ms. Reddick, I see your point. So, and I'm just trying to think, you know, if a situation occurred, because we've had, you know, we've had several of this unfortunate situation. So, if that were to recur, and then, would have to occur again? And if, would it be in the better interest of the superintendent? So, I'm just trying to, you know, think.
So, and I, a couple of things that I want to just kind of point out, too, for the public. The recommendations that are being made are not just arbitrarily being made, right? So, I want them to, the public, to really understand that these are recommendations that are being made in order for us to be in alignment with statute. So, that's where the language comes from. I also want to point to this specific discussion. If we are in a position that we are making a determination to extend an expulsion from a student, look at what the language says. It is, it is a recommendation of your threat management team, which this team of individuals, be it at the school level, up to the, to the district level, is identifying that this student, based on threat management, is not safe to be on our campus. That is the reason why that would be determined. It would not be just, you know, myself or the team just making that decision arbitrarily. It would be, as a result of us taking that student through the threat management process, and they still coming up high, as in, we cannot safely educate the student within the offerings that we have within Flagler Schools. Now, if this is a student that is a disability, for sure, or potentially a student that is not identified as a student with a disability, we would identify at that time what services we would provide to the student. And then, those services would be provided to the student. However, the student will remain as expelled. And so, that can also look very differently based on the services that the student needs at that time. But this is all individually based, and the initiator is that the expulsion is expiring, and threat management is reviewing, and this student still is at a level that does not make them safe to be on our campus.
And that is done officially anyway, with students, like the district threat team. They gather, they, they document, they discuss as a team, and then, they bring that to the board individually when we have meetings. Yep, all right, thank you.
And that's outlined in our practices, right?
Yes.
Our operating procedures, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So, I'll add one zero zero six point one three at the end of that sentence.
Again, that would make me feel better, but again, we act as a group.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any problem with that. But let's, let's add it. It's a worthy thing to help parents point in a direction for a remedy if they're looking for it.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay.
The other item I'd like to discuss is the board member request. So.
Which number, sorry?
Ninety-seven hundred.
Oh, last one, thank you.
Once again, policies are not the individual operating practices, rules, leadership oversight. And I totally support maintaining professionalism, a comfortable environment, safe environment for our students. But I do not believe that this additional policy language is necessary, because we already have a professional ethics clause, and that this rule risks adding redundancy and a level of essentially superseding the leadership of the district and the school in micromanaging what is being displayed, made available in the classroom, and could lead to additional antagonistic relationships between community members and teachers, where they want to identify any particular item or symbol that they themselves may feel is not neutral. And I think it's a slippery slope that we also cannot and are not abiding by in terms of us as a school board. So, think about our partnerships with Advent Health. That is a Christ-centered religious healthcare facility that is not neutral, right? We've had board members attend events that are not seen as neutral, and wear their board member designation, identification on themselves. We have staff members who may have symbols of maybe tattoos, maybe jewelry that they wear, Star of David, a cross. So, we are creating a situation where we are essentially pitting each other, against each other, as opposed to leaving it to the professional ethics and standards through HR and the school leadership, leadership team.
So, I would argue that the language that we had was not clear enough, and this began probably four or five weeks ago in conversations and feedback. So, I do think that this better protects us, actually, and is much more clear on what we are allowing.
Yeah, and the more clear and concise it is, the easier it is to enforce.
I, I just want to say one thing for everyone, just to think about. So, policies that we create, it has to, or it should, it should help us accomplish our mission, our vision, our values, and our strategic plan, most importantly, strategic plan. So, I want everyone to think about that, and that's something that's, you know, really important with any type of policy, not procedure, but for policies. Mission, vision, strategic plan.
Yeah, and, and this goes beyond that. This is going into the oversight of principle of the leadership team. And I question our ability to scale to the investigations that might come up, or even legal challenges. So, now, our team would be tasked in investigating and reporting on additional challenges to what may be displayed, what is or is not appropriate in a classroom, as opposed to having that professional ethics. And taking care of it at the leadership level at the school, and then, if it's not complied with, then it raises up to HR. We don't need a policy where we're highlighting this micromanagement and policing of our staff. And it will sow discourse and essentially adds another level of feeling like we're policing them unnecessarily when we already have these professional ethics in place. And again, really, I'm thinking about operationally, how would we manage the influx of those requests?
What about the discord that comes when students are uncomfortable with something? You know, that we have to consider all students. And you mentioned, we're overstepping principles. Well, we are the board, and these are our policies, and you can't have different rules throughout all the schools. It needs to be consistent.
We don't have different rules, right? We have the professional standards. And so, any, any, what is displayed in the classroom is already part of even the teacher's evaluation. It says that the classroom environment is safe and welcoming. It says that the classroom environment and the materials displayed are to support the, the learning and the learning environment. So, we already have these items here. What he, this is, is to, I feel, to instigate some feeling that there, that isn't happening in the classroom. And what makes somebody uncomfortable or not, right? You know, one child who is Jewish could feel uncomfortable by a teacher wearing a cross, but yet, that has protections under the First Amendment. So, what one group says they're comfortable with, right, like, you know, I'm maybe not comfortable with. What there are, the standards of what's allowed is the curriculum. There are going to be things that could be uncomfortable in the curriculum. There are going to be things that you may disagree with. So, if you have a civics teacher analyzing propaganda that is provided or disseminated in, let's say, the Kuwait War, does that mean that that cannot be presented or displayed, discussed? So, we can't go by emotion alone of an individual. There are professional ethics. There are curriculum. There are, there's already the teacher evaluation system.
I don't think, you mentioned like wearing jewelry or something. I don't think it goes that far, because we talked about some of that.
Well, what is it?
Well, it says here on classroom doors, walls, or other areas visible to students.
So, that's, I guess that's my question, yes, from.
So, I think that raises a good point, and because of these questions and this discussions, I would suggest, in addition, just to clarify that and get us out of that dynamic about personal appearance, which is covered by, you know, address code, policy, and so forth. If you just added in the words on the second bullet, or other areas of district property, I think it would help clarify.
So, that means now you're going to place what bumper sticker somebody has on their vehicle if it's on district property?
That's already addressed. Well, I mean, there's already policy that addresses things.
The car is on the district property.
Yes, ma'am, and that's, should already be addressed by district policy, which forbids campaigning on campus. So, there, that is something that is subject to being addressed under these policies anyway.
So. Sorry. Oh, sorry. I, I just, and I know that this was added, I, just reading what we had under A. Is there any, from what we have already, already created, are we, have we had challenges with that, like?
So, we, we have families or community members, they, that will contest something that is in a classroom, and we have processes for addressing that. The original board request was around, is the language clear enough? And that, to that, board member, that the language is. And that, to that, board member that the language is not clear enough. What I'm hearing Ms. Ruddy state is that add the language, don't add the language, it still, all the requirements through professional standards and code of ethics, all of that stuff is still going to apply if the language is there or if the language isn't there. If someone has something on the wall that does not, that is inappropriate for the classroom, then that will be addressed with that teacher through, you know, whatever process that is. Sometimes it is a disciplinary conversation. Sometimes it is corrective coaching or whatever that is. So I think that is what I'm hearing from Ms. Ruddy is that the language seems a bit much to add when there are already other avenues that address if it can or cannot be included.
Right, and skirts the line of essentially the practice enforcement, which is not under the board's purview. And so to that end, the question is, were there complaints made by students and/or public members where the leadership team could not make, make a decision that something was or was not appropriate because of unclear language?
We have not been, and I want to just look a little bit at Mr. Ulet from professional standards. We have not been in a position that we have not been able to address items that are on display in our classrooms, on the walls or any of those things before this language was proposed.
I guess that's my question, I'm just wondering like...
That's not how I was seeing it. Okay, but go ahead.
The easiest way to go into a classroom and address anything as far as what's in there or what is not is, is it apropos to the curriculum? So as a performance matter, if it's not a part of the curriculum, it could still be, I mean, I could, I could bring a beautiful replica of a Rodin statue into the classroom and it's actually a math class. And it doesn't belong there. It's not part of what we're working on right now, okay? So is it misconduct? No, it's not misconduct. But we can address issues in ways other than misconduct by saying, is it necessary to the curriculum we're working on right now? So that gives us a wide latitude to have discussions with our employees, say, why is that there? And, you know, I had a teacher once had a poster of Jim Morrison in the doors. And guess what? It's because in his senior English class, they were also studying the lyrics. And so he could tell me, that was my direct application of why it's there. If you can have that discussion and relate it to the curriculum in a logical way, you can work through it.
And I feel that's the most appropriate and non-divisive way to have the communications. It is already written and part of our practices.
But that would happen irrevocably, correct?
That would happen. I think, again, the intent was for individuals reading it in isolation, will they know that that is not allowed or that it is allowed or not allowed? Which is where the request came to add the language that it was in board policy. Those of us who are working in this work, we absolutely know that through, there are different ways we would address things that are in a classroom. And we would, we would address it appropriately if that teacher or that individual, because I don't want to just say teacher because it could be anybody, right? So if that individual had something to display and they were refusing to, to remove it or whatever the case. And we've just actually done some professional learning with our, our leadership team on this, making sure that they understand that our classrooms are not just public property, that they can just go in and do whatever to and have whatever in. And the items that are there and on the wall must, I, must align with statute, board policy and such. And so we do have to reinforce that yearly with individuals.
Okay, so I asked this question four to five weeks ago, which is when our conversation took place. The fact that it's before us now tells me that maybe the policies we have were not enough. So here it is to vote on. Like I said, this conversation happened quite a while ago.
And it also was, it started up before Neola was already in place and all of that to say, is the language clear enough for us? We have this language through Neola that I think does provide some, some clarity already. But again, we can add additional language if that is the will of the board.
I have a question. So with the, in the green, so for the religious aspect. So for example, tomorrow's FPC praying at the flagpole. So they provide that information on the Facebook FPC page, you know, things like that. So is that going to...
That is not sponsored or initiated by the school or by the adults there. It is by a club and it's student-initiated, the prayer.
For teach, so I'm just trying to make sure...
So teachers could on their own attend on that...
No, but on the like FPC page, which is our school page. So if there's any, like, I'm just going by the religious part, right? Anything that's religious related, like the breakfast we went to, the leadership. It was, you know, so is that not allowed with this policy? So that's, I'm just trying to make sure because...
But remember, this is talking about classroom materials.
And staff.
But what's good for the classroom is good for the actions of the board and the leadership. So we can't say, we're going to attend a faith partnership breakfast, but then say that that's, don't do, don't...
Well, it says visible to students or the public.
Don't do as I do, do as I say?
It's not.
Well, that's, that's not...
That's on your own time.
Exactly, that's outside. We all have our personal beliefs and things.
That's not on our time, we're acting as on behalf as the elected official and representing.
Well, we can't separate all of that always because we exist.
And if they invited us, they invited us under our school board email. They did not invite us under our personal emails. I would leave that argument unto the lawyers. That's what they enjoy to discuss, but that's my perspective, yeah.
Well, I, I think this makes it pretty clear. And I do believe this ties in with our, with our mission because these things become distraction and they distract against learning.
It's a distraction when we make a distraction and we advertise it so that becomes antagonistic.
Can you please stop talking after me?
So that's...
Ms. Ruddy, this is a continued problem that we have, okay? I let you speak, I let you get all your points out, but when somebody has a challenge to it, you don't allow the same back. So I have the floor right now. And what I was saying is that I believe this makes it very clear that of what the expectations are. Probably these are distractions in the school. We've seen, I, since I've been elected, I have fielded several complaints about these type of issues. I'm dealing with one right now as a matter of fact. It is an ongoing distraction. I think this makes it very clear, sends the message that these things are, for those that are trying to, to, to promote an activism through this, that, that will, they'll have to answer to that through the professional standards that you're talking about. But just like any policy, if a, if an educator, any of our staff needs clarification before they do something, they can, they can seek counsel for that within, within our organization to say, hey, would this violate policy before I do it? And I think that's a prudent thing to do if you, if you feel that it falls outside of these, these descriptions. So this is, this is my view. And I think that these are, these are worthy additions to the policy. And so that, that's my position. You've made your position. And I do believe that we've seen other distractions come from things like this too, especially when we had walkouts at the high schools years ago, which that was a big problem. So the, these things can fester into bigger problems. So I think we nip it in the bud here and we focus on, on education, on having resources and tools that support the curriculum in the classroom when that happens, as Mr. Ulet clearly explained, you know, for mathematics and having a statue there that doesn't apply. Those are very easy ones to identify, right? But if you, if you feel like you want to walk the line, then you better get clarification beforehand or it's going to be addressed. Because we do hear from parents about these things. And I've heard about this before I was elected. And some of it was the reason why people asked me to run is for these issues. So yes, I do stand on principle of the direct language in this policy from my perspective. So we've all spoke to this issue today. I think our feelings and our thoughts are out there. Does anybody else have something new to add to this particular policy?
My perspective is that this fuels the discord by adding fuel, adding another layer of oversight or asking teachers to be policed, you know, exponentially. And the student walkout that you're referencing saying that happened three years ago was a student walkout, was not a teacher walkout.
You know, I know we all have a First Amendment right, but there are limits to that in the workplace everywhere that you go. And if, you know, if something is causing discord within the classroom, we have a right as an organization to say, look, you know, we need to draw some lines. So anyway, we will vote on this tonight and we'll see where it goes.
Tonight will be around advertisement of changes, right? And then it will come back before you to see if this board accepts this in as a change.
So I just, I just wanted to ask a few more things with that. So I know, I know you mentioned you brought it, I remember, a few weeks ago. So from HR's perspective, so we haven't had any issues with what we have. So I know you mentioned it wasn't clear. I'm just reading, I don't know, I'm just trying to see if what we have, maybe just like a perspective of understanding what it is, like from what we have, we haven't had challenges? Or we've had challenges, but we were able to successfully...
Well, what I would say is if we had challenges regarding proper education of the workforce. So that, you know, I would say there was, you know, some misunderstandings as far as what they could and couldn't have. And that was clarified and addressed from my perspective.
There were misunderstandings from individuals not knowing.
Well, I would say not, whether you know or not, I don't, I don't, I can't speak to, you know, your level of knowledge, whether you decide to test what is allowable or not is another thing. I mean, we have, our workforce runs the entire age from, you know, I've been in the teaching profession, I can count in days and weeks to folks that can count it and, you know, longer than I have. So in that timeframe, we're continuing to revisit and educate folks on policies and what is allowable and what is not. We can't always preempt it, but, you know, when it has occurred, when it is addressed. And the issues that I'm aware of have been addressed.
But as Mr. Furrie stated, he's dealing with a situation right now continues to come up. So again, I just go back to, I think that this adds more clarity.
And I think to answer Ms. Ramirez's question, we can address the issue to what Mr. Ulet is saying is that there may be individuals who say, I did not know, I was not aware. And so that's where he comes to, let's educate this individual on what is allowed or not allowed. But not because our policy, our statute or any other thing that we're governed by prevented us from addressing the issue. So I'm not responsible for if you know or if you don't know, right? But I, this is what the expectation is. And so that really helps us to determine how we, how we walk it.
So when you say when they know or they don't know? So I'm just trying, so if I'm, I'm a student or a faculty or, you know, staff and I do something, I'm recorded and I tell you, I didn't know, I couldn't have my church stuff on my board and this is why, you would then tell me, well, you cannot have that or, you know, whatever it may be. So, and you're saying that this new addition is what we are supposed to, like, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying if, if that were the example or any example, we would come to you through likely some type of due process, giving you an opportunity to express your side.
Got it.
Say during your side, you say, I didn't know. Well, the first thing we're going to do is identify, are there means that you should have known, right? Did you sit through the trainings where we've addressed any of these things? Did you sign and identify that you have sat through this training that tells you the thing that you're saying that you did not know, right? If you, if you have, then you know, right? Or at least you've signed off that you know. And then we will continue to work the process through the side of professional standard. Sometimes discipline also comes with education. It comes with us providing you with some additional knowledge about this area where maybe you did not know or maybe we need to just revisit with you. So it's, he's answering your questions, but it's two different ways to address the issue. There hasn't been nothing to stop us from addressing the issue. Nothing that has, not, not the policy, not the statute, any of those things from the things that we have dealt with. What we have found as a result of that is the need for us to retrain, readdress different things that may not have been very clear to individuals.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
All right. I think we've all expressed our views here. So I think everybody knows where everybody stands for now. We will vote on this, this evening for advertisement and we'll go from there. Are there any other policies?
I had a few, I know Ms. Ruddy started.
I'm done, thank you.
Okay. And I just have a few and they're, it will be pretty quick. I just, so for twenty-four-ten, so two-four-ten, that is our school health service policy. And I know this may not be something that would go into a policy, but I'm just curious what, for, for example, it talks about emergency action plan available at all times and it gives an example like dances. So I attend a lot of the dances, stuff happens, you know, I mean, and we have an admin on duty, but you know, just, this is just one example. So is there somewhere, I guess this is just something just for us to think about where we have, say there's a child, third grade, it's a dance, they're allergic to peanuts, where's their EpiPen? How are we supposed to know? Like, I'm just trying to think, just trying to mitigate stuff like, is there something that the school knows? Because even as a volunteer, I wouldn't know and chaos would happen. So I know we have our AEDs, we have our Stop the Bleed. We have now, some of the schools have the Life Back. You know, we need a mop bucket. So like, I'm just thinking EpiPen, that's just one example. An emergency happens, we should have that action plan at all times. So volunteers, when we come, and there's a lot more volunteers, we have no access to that. So just thinking on the procedure part, so I know this wouldn't be policy. If we can think about something unless it's already being done, but I know as a volunteer, if something were to happen at that last dance, I, I wouldn't have access or I don't believe a teacher would have access right away, so.
Are you asking if, because the last line says here that anything related to allergies or medical issues, those records need to be available even at extracurricular events? Those extracurricular events are supposed to be somebody, whether it's a dean or an administrator, who would have access to, I think you're thinking paper copies, but it's also in Skyward. So they would be able to access that even on their cellphone?
Yeah, so who, even if it's extracurricular activity, there's always a staff member that is present.
Who should have.
Yes, who would have access to that, that information. It also determines, you have, we have to identify, is this an event where we are hosting, but the students are in the care and responsibility of their parent? Versus is this something that is an extracurricular activity?
Something of a dance, like, and so just having, it says having access to it at all times. So I'm just wondering...
A staff member that is present on campus would have access.
So every staff member would have access.
No, I didn't say every staff member.
I mean, that is at the event.
An appropriate, yes, an appropriate staff member at the event, yes.
Since we're going through policies, I know it's not a policy and it's more of a procedure, but I'm just...
But we would not do, we would not give that to volunteers.
No, absolutely not, but I'm just curious.
And we do require that one of the attendees of an activity or an event, or if it's an off-campus field trip, there has to be somebody that is med-trained and has access to the medication that attends those events or attends that trip to be able to provide those resources if necessary. So we do accommodate for that.
I think maybe what you're asking for and makes sense is in terms of the policy execution, it's whenever there's an event, the people, the adults volunteering, those running, need to know, who is that person, right? Because you wouldn't necessarily always know.
Something were to happen, so, and again, this wouldn't be in the policy and I know it's more of a procedure, but for all these events, we, we focus on having volunteers all the time. And that's like one of my other hats, I'm a volunteer. But if something were to happen, just thinking how the accessibility of volunteers, and I know that may be internal campus related... campus related, but since we had it in here, I wanted to bring it up, because if we don't have it, I, you know, I don't know when it will come back up. So, but I do like the policy, I love it.
Am I hearing you say that, um, there may be a need for us to clarify, who is the point of contact at an extracurricular event to our volunteers that may be there serving?
Yeah, just because we, we love our volunteers, and we want them to keep coming, but I want to make sure they feel ready when something happens, whether it's minor, or, and we have a policy on it. So, I don't want it to fall back on us if something were to happen, oh, it's in your policy, and, you know, just, but I do appreciate the update and the clarity.
Along those lines, when you have an extracurricular event like this, that's hosted and sponsored by the school, there's paperwork that has to be filled out, which does typically indicate who the administrator is in charge. Could we make it part of the, or maybe to ask you all to make it part of your processes, that a copy of that is shared with the volunteers? I'm thinking that's what you're asking for. That way, there's an identification of who would have that information.
Maybe just consistency with, just when you have your leadership teams with all your campuses, just making sure everybody's on the same page, because one school may be doing it, one may not, and I just would hate, because we have a really good policy, and then it doesn't get followed through.
We can definitely revisit at, at our leadership meeting.
Yeah. So, that was that. Um, the, uh, so number 5514, regarding, um, bikes, bikes and transportation. So, a couple of questions, I just wanted to know, it talked about bike speed, two miles an hour. Is this transportation also talking about, now we have a golf cart? Is that referring to if campuses have golf carts, do we need to?
Personal transportation.
Personal transportation.
This is personal transportation, so this will be talking to the, the students' personal transportation, not the staff, or staff vehicles, or staff transportation. So, it does not talk, refer to golf carts.
So, I just wanted to make sure, because it was talking about transportation on campus grounds, so I didn't know if that was referring to anyone on campus?
It's in the 5000s.
Yeah.
5000, 5514?
5514.
Right, so, the 5000s are all dedicated to regulating student behavior.
Okay. All right, thank you. And for 2421, the workforce money-back guarantee, so I know that was updated because of the law. So, it mentioned the programs, we were able to choose them, and I saw the three. Is there, um, do we feel confident with those three? Um, if they do not receive?
Yes, we met with Renee Swagerty, uh, to, to identify those programs, yes. So, she was confident with those programs, and Dr. Brown just stepped out, so, but she was part of that conversation as well.
Okay, yeah. I was just, I saw, it said we could choose, and I saw the three, so.
I think that was also in the updated student progression plan. They changed those as well.
Yes, okay. Um, yeah, those were mine, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, that's everything. Okay, thank you, appreciate the information. And we will move on now to 12.1, uh, public comment. Do we have any?
I'm sorry, um, Chair, uh, the board meeting calendar?
Oh, I accidentally crossed that off. Yes, okay, that was, because we have a board meeting on, um?
November 11.
Veterans Day, or?
Yes, so, November 11th is Veterans Day, and, um, we need to identify when the board will meet, or if you will not meet.
Is there any reason we can't do the fourth? I know, because we don't have any elections, like, actually coming up, right? November 4th, it says election day, but.
I mean, I'm not aware of any, but, uh, the only issue with that?
Is this an election?
Not for our county, I don't think.
Well, I mean, there's, there isn't, no, I mean, not, not this November.
Oh, no, yeah.
So, I mean, I, I'm, I'm okay with, uh, November 4th. Want to move it up to the first Tuesday? Is that what you're, yeah, is that good with everybody?
So, we're looking to move the workshop that's currently scheduled on the 11th to the 4th. And the week before, we would have had an information workshop and a school board meeting.
Correct.
And this would be an agenda workshop.
Yes.
Yeah, that's because of the sandwich between Thanksgiving, because that's moved in, yeah, okay. I'm fine with the 4th, if everybody else is, okay. So, that's, well.
Can we move it up to two? Is if we start so that we can conclude by 5:00?
Yeah, yep. So, 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock?
Mm-hmm.
2 o'clock?
Yeah, 2, should be it.
I'm okay with it.
This will be on the agenda, um, tonight for you to approve the board change to the this day.
Very good. All right.
Is that 2 o'clock?
Yeah, 2 o'clock on the, November the 4th. All right. So, there we go, that concludes all our business items for this workshop. And, uh, now, public comment. Do we have any public comment?
There are no public comments.
Okay, so, we'll close, uh, public comment and go on to, uh, any board member requests. Hearing none, we'll move on to closing comments.
The only thing I want to say is Mr. Marcus, um, so when I was at policy training, Neola was there, but it was individuals that were not with us, helping us. So, they came up to me, and, uh, I did let them know, but they were raving about Marcus and all the hard work in Flagler County. They said, out of every school district, they have never seen a school district get all of these policies as where they are in the time, and I want to say it was eight months. So, they said some districts are taking two plus years, and the tables, the table I was sitting at, um, I was so proud. Like, they were very, like, you know, so I just want to say, thank you for all your hard work. Uh, and they wanted to take them, like they want.
Well, you can't have them.
I'm just saying, uh, so we're, I, I'm really excited about all policies. I know it's been a lot of hard work, but I think, um, it's because we have a great staff, and then, you know, we, we all worked a lot of hours too, you know, changing our schedules and things.
We get some credit.
Yes, you do.
We did some, but the district staff behind us, you know, just following up and reminding us, but it showed from complete strangers that, so thank you, everybody.
Well, I think we can say everybody in this room had a big part of this. Let's all, a round of applause for everybody. Congratulations, Marcus, for being recognized, yes.
And that's all, I'll save the rest for tonight. So, thank you.
I'll save it for tonight.
Okay, and likewise?
I'll just attach myself to that. When we, when we told them that we wanted to get it done within the school year, they, they, they chuckled, and I said, we're getting this done. We haven't updated our policies in, in quite some, some time. And Marcus really was the person behind the scene, making sure we're hitting the deadlines, and he has spent a lot of time with, um, Neola, and he knows this board, these policies, um, very intimately. And so, as I'm still using my notebook L M to, you know, ask it a question, he is a, a huge resource when it comes to our board policy. So, thank you so much, Mr. San Filippo, and all your hard work in getting to yes.
Very good. All right, this meeting is adjourned.